Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning, and happy Tuesday to you. We're calling our meeting to order this morning. Today is Tuesday, June 11th, 2024. It's shortly after the 10:00 a.m. hour. We're here at 901 Main Street in the heart of Old Town Conyers. I see a lot of bright faces this morning. Everybody's looking nice and happy and bright, and that's what we want to see, absolutely. So Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Washington, we're calling our meeting to order, and we will start with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance and our good friend Reverend Walter Brown. Hadn't seen you in a while, Pastor Brown. Come on up and lead us from the Good Hope Baptist Church, absolutely. Come on up, Pastor Brown.
Good morning.
Morning.
Yeah. We want to thank each and every one for being here.
Absolutely.
And, uh, Father, we thank you for this day. Father, we thank you for a day we've never seen before. And Father, we thank you for a day we'll never see again. And Father, if we never did anything else, we need to say we thank you. We thank you because we can't do anything without you. And Father, I'd like to bless each and every one that's here, Father. Not only one that's here, the one that's all over the highways and byways and all over. And then, Father, as we go through this election, Father, we want to thank you for putting the one that you fit for them to be in there, Father. We don't know who they are, Father. We don't know who they're going to be, Father, but I want to thank you anyway. And Father, as I go through this session, Father, we want to ask you to let us have an open mind. And Father, all what I can do is say we thank you, thee blessing and all other blessings. We thank you in your son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Brown for leading us in the invocation this morning. It's always good to see you, good to have you here. Yes, sir. Moving on to item number three, which is special recognitions and presentation. I think we've got just a few this morning. We want to highlight some good things that are happening. Executive Director Roach?
Yes, we do. This morning, we have, I couldn't help it, I was catching our former employee over in the back. The Heritage High School Girls Track Team Recognition, so if y'all could all come line up. Yeah?
All right. Y'all give them a hand as they make their way up. Absolutely.
It's good to have you back.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Washington.
Good morning.
As always, good morning. Director Sanders, Chief of Staff, good to see you. Um, as Director Roach was saying, I used to be an employee of Rockdale County. This is where I got my start. So I'm a graduate of Rockdale High School and went to college and came back right here. And it's indeed a pleasure to be a citizen of Rockdale County.
All right, that's good news. That's worthy of a round of applause right there. Absolutely. All right.
Again, I want to present this morning our Heritage Girls Track Team won state this time at two events.
Wow.
So last year was one, this time is two. We have some of our student athletes here, but those events were the four-by-two-hundred-meter relay, which they did with a state record.
Amen.
And then they did it also, they won it in the four-by-four-hundred-meter relay as well. And so they're doing a great job representing Rockdale County on the state level. And again, this is Mackenzie Burnett, she was on that team. And of course, we can't do without our coaches. So this is Coach Freddie Jones, our assistant coach, and our head coach, Coach Russell Thomas. They are the masterminds behind all the success.
Let's give Mackenzie and the coaches a round of applause. Absolutely.
So just as I shared last year, we hope to be back next year with more records and more accolades to share about the good things that are happening in Rockdale County.
Mr. Athletic Director, we're so proud of you and how you're representing Rockdale. We appreciate you sharing that story about being a student in Rockdale County Public Schools, working with Chief Sanders and Rockdale County Board of Commissioners. Now you're representing Heritage High School as the athletic director. We certainly do appreciate it. But I want to hear from Mackenzie. Mackenzie, come on up here and tell us, give us some good news, girl, because you was out there doing your thing. Y'all give her another round of applause, and she can gather her thoughts. Absolutely. Pull that mic down, Mr. Athletic Director, so she can talk and tell us a little bit. Just tell us something. Tell us a little bit about your, what are you doing this summer? And tell us about as you prepare for next year to represent Rockdale and continue to take us to the state level.
Um, this summer, I'm training with my coaches this year. We started like maybe a week ago, and we're just training from now until the season starts so we can just do better, bigger things.
All right, very good. Give her another round of applause. That's it, and that's all. That's good. Absolutely. So Mackenzie, we're rooting for you. You're making us proud all over Rockdale County. We certainly do appreciate. Now, let me ask, what grade level are you?
Uh, I'm going through the 11th.
She's headed to the 11th grade. She'll be a junior in high school next year. So that question leads me to this one, Mr. Athletic Director. So when school gets back in session, will you have the opportunity to take the coaches, along with Mackenzie, to one of the Board of Education meetings and highlight her in front of Dr. Oakes and all of the Board of Education members?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So we've already done that.
We're going to be tuned in as you do it again.
That happened on last one.
All right.
Yes, sir. And so then we'll be here hopefully next year and the Board of Education next year.
We're going to clap in advance. Y'all give her a round of applause. Absolutely. Absolutely. You see, the thing about being in Rockdale County, we have to be about forward-thinking. You can't just wait to celebrate. You know good things are going to happen. You may as well go ahead and celebrate now. Give her another round of applause. Absolutely. We have a video. I'm understanding that we have a video from our PR department to highlight some more of your accomplishments and your activity throughout this season. Pub relations will get that going, and we'll take a look at the video they have on the monitor. So we get super excited here in Rockdale when all of our young people, we have so many young people all across this county doing wonderful things, representing this community, and I tell you, we really have to really blow the, sound the trumpet really loud when young people are doing great things. There's enough for the media to talk about all those folks who are not doing what they're supposed to. Well, we have more people doing the right, y'all give it up for Mackenzie and all of them. Give it up for them one more time. You keep doing the right thing, have a super safe summer, follow the leadership of your coaches. One more time, give these coaches, these coaches a round of applause. Absolutely. Absolutely. Mr. Athletic Director, we thank you for coming out so we can highlight all of the work that you all are doing. And the great partnership, Commissioner Washington, Commissioner Williams, with the Rockdale County Public School System and Dr. Oakes and his team and the members of the Board of Education. But this is where the rubber meets the road. The young people, the coaches, making a difference and changing their lives and representing their communities and moving forward. Mackenzie, whatever you need, we're right here for you, okay? All right, y'all have a blessed day. Thank you so much. All right. Now, Commissioner Williams, I understand that we have a special presentation this morning. You want to talk to us about it?
We do. Um, just a little history. In 2015, the Stepping Up Initiative was initiated and by the National Association of Counties, by the National Sheriff's Association, by the American Psychiatric Association, and by the Councils of State Governments. I can never remember, get that name right. Um, and we signed a resolution that year to, that we would support that initiative. And the initiative itself is to keep people with mental health, drug addictions, out of jail and into treatment. That doesn't mean they don't go to jail at some point because there is accountability. But there are different options for reducing that amount of time, getting people into treatment that are willing to do. So we have this great executive team. We have our project, whatever, I can never remember the titles. Brenda Ernest. We have our project developer, Bill Carruthers. We have our creative consultant, Tanisha Character. And we have our project manager for our Restorative Justice Complex, Mary Lou Snow. So they are going to make a presentation and share with us some of the things they've been doing in the last five years since, uh, just before COVID started. So come on, come on up.
I think I'd like to call this team the Dream Team.
I, I think we have to because
Yes.
Um, I would say there's probably not a team in this county that works as long and as hard as they do.
Right.
They're always on call, always on call. I text, Brenda was out of state last week, and I had a mother, a grandmother contact me. You know, Brenda knows everything. She has everything. I noticed Judge Bill's in the back.
Give it up for Judge Bill. I was going to announce the Honorable Judge Nancy Bill. Stand up, Judge, so they can see you. We got a lot of new people in the county. Y'all give her another round of applause. Absolutely. Absolutely.
And I just noticed Paula Boyd is a big part.
Ms. Boyd, yes, indeed. Always represented. Yes. Thank you so much.
And we have two of our ODR members, Roy Brian and Tom.
Gentlemen, y'all stand up this morning. Absolutely.
We'll turn the time over to you, Brenda.
All right, great. Uh, I guess the next slide, please. First, I want to say good morning and thank you guys so much for allowing us to present. Uh, I just kind of wanted to say, and supporting us with stepping up.
Next slide, next slide, please.
Please. You know, I want to talk about the accountability, the responsibility, saving lives, and investing in our community. And what all that means is that I just want the taxpayers to know how well you guys have led us and provided for us. But I want to put the proof in the pudding, and it's not just a talk. And maybe some of this, you may not know how much you guys have invested in us and being the leaders. Next slide, please. This flow chart right here reflects the hard work that have gone into all of the judicial system and even into the Sheriff Department and also through the funding, through NAF Care. So we've come together as a team. At one point in time, we worked in silos. So this flow chart identifies when an individual walked through that booking door of the Rockdale County Sheriff Department and how we successfully, with all of our court, from your magistrate court to your superior court to your DA's office, allow individuals with substance abuse and mental health to flow through the system and develop a successful plan. Please notice about a successful plan, and we don't just wake up one morning and say, hey, Judge Bill, get Johnny a bond and let him go on. Oh, no. We have to make sure we provide evidence-based assessments and information in order for the judicial system to make the right decision. That's the investment that you guys have put into the Stepping Up Initiative. This involves collaborating all of your partners in your community, you know, the working relationship. And again, about the public safety. I'm not going to go through this. We left some copies of this, but I just want you to know, every person that gets booked into Rockdale County Jail, we reached in within 48 to 72 hours because you know what? Individuals have been sitting in jail too long, so we're wasting taxpayers' money when we can move an individual forward. Next slide, please. I wanted to kind of give you a little backdrop data. At any point in time in Rockdale County Jail, you know, we'll have at least 300-some inmates per week. The Stepping Up Team has reached out through the process that has been developed in that whole flow chart to give you some information. Look at the number of individuals with mental health. Look at, and that's out of a number of 621. Next slide, please. Use alcohol and drugs. Look at your numbers. Look at the ones who have responded and going through that process of the flow chart and holding us accountable for every person that come through our jail regardless of the crime that has been committed. Next slide, please. Homeless data. And you're responding to the homeless data now with the development of your homeless task force. So the issues that we are currently facing with the Stepping Up program and with the Stepping Up Team, those are some of your response. Look at your numbers. Next slide, please. Rockdale resident. If nothing more, these are your constituents. These are the individuals that you serve. And we just want you to know that through the stepping up in the judicial system and our court, we've recognized that in, at this point of trying to identify, look at the numbers of individuals that are Rockdale County citizen. Next slide, please. I was asked to give you just a brief overview of where we are with the opioid settlement. And as you guys know, with the opioid settlement, that is $26 billion that have been agreed upon. And the state of Georgia will receive $638 million over 18 years. So I keep hearing, well, Brenda, we ain't spending none of the money yet. Well, I got to tell you this. Before we do that, we have a responsibility and an accountability. You see, what happened when we got the tobacco money, it didn't go well. You know, we have no proof, there was really no guideline set up. Opioid funds, we have a responsibility and a guideline. There's something else that happened. COVID money. COVID money got wasted along the way. Some got misrepresented or misspent. They're not allowing this this time with the opioid fund.
And to be clear, some got misrepresented, misspent in other places. In Rockdale County, we was accountable. I just want to make sure they know what you're saying and how you're saying it, Ms. Ernest. I love your passion, but please continue on.
Okay, so saying that, Commissioner, is to say I totally agree with you. So with the committee that has been established, we want to make sure that we're transparent.
Yes.
We want to make sure that the public know how and what we're doing because this is a precedent time now where we're honoring people with mental illness and addiction. At one point in time, we locked them up, sent them away. You know, people with mental illness stayed in prison longer than anyone because they had nowhere to go. Well, we're responding differently now in our court system. Now, at this time, you have $499,335.09 in Rockdale County. That's how much money you currently have at this point in time. So the reporting requirements and other requirements based on that transparency and accountability means that we have to have an infrastructure that's going to be put in place. That infrastructure really needs to talk about how do I track the data? And if I'm going to track the data, that means you're tracking the dollars. And if you're tracking the dollars, then you need to be able to tell the taxpayer, this is why we gave Rockdale House for man $18,000 based on the number. So maybe at a later time, I'll be able to come back because I know these guys have something to say because I can go on and on. But I also want to make sure that Rockdale County is aware that we are totally involved with training and nalotrexone in our court system for individuals to know that is how we bring people back with this opioid overdose. So we're very high in that department in our accountability court. Last thing I want to say, based upon the accountability courts and the judicial system, you know, um, we have had the opportunities of ensuring that we have had babies that have been born drug-free in our court. Fifteen babies. I need to also let you know that the employment rate for individuals who come through accountability court ranges from 100%, 85%, and 76%. Yes. That's invested back in the community.
Yes.
I need for you to know that. But last but not least, Judge Bills is also a part of our regional advisory council that's been set up by the government as we relate to the transparency of how we spend that money. Because we're Region Three. Region Three is Newton County, Rockdale County, and Clayton County. Your larger counties will receive their money somewhat differently because they're larger counties. So I just want to make sure, I just kind of put that out there. Last thing I want to say is that our DUI court, which is the DUI court you guys invested in as it relates to providing us with funds, we had been identified and featured in the Georgia Trend. You know, that's saying that we were a model court.
That's right.
Rockdale County.
That's right.
Georgia has 159 counties. So, I mean, don't need to say more.
Ms. Ernest, don't leave the podium. Y'all give her a round of applause. Let me tell you. I mean, I didn't know what to repeat because you said so many powerful impactful things. But one of the things that you said that I really appreciated, you said that the data tracks the dollars. And when you're talking about making sure that we're transparent and accountable with the funds that we're spending to impact this mental health community. Then she talked about the strong word of partnership and talked about how we intersect, the judicial system intersect with law enforcement and how they partner up to make a difference. Let me tell you something. I don't know who's watching and listening to this broadcast, but the amount of work that we're doing in Rockdale County through the leadership of Judge Bill, I really want you to come, you and the other part of that Dream Team, y'all come on up, give them a round of applause as they're making their way up. It's a poor frog that won't praise his own pardon. And we, Judge Bills has been on the front lines. Come on up, Judge. Absolutely. I want just to hear from you just a moment on how all of this works. And she really talked about, she says, you know, we don't just wake up and just walk into the judge's chamber and say, let's get this person out of here. There is a process. There are procedures. Speak to us a little bit, Judge, this morning about how this ties in from your perspective.
So from my perspective, this Dream Team makes all of our jobs easier and our decisions easier to make. And the more information, you know, knowledge is power. So we can't just, you know, back in the day, you'd sentence somebody, you wouldn't worry about where they went.
Right.
You, you know, process along, go along. But now it's, do they have somewhere to go? We're not going to put somebody out on the street. We're not going to put somebody who needs to be in treatment somewhere else. So they walk through the doors and the team, we've, we've sort of loosely set up a multidisciplinary team. And as soon as they come to the jail, NAF Care, Brenda, we have a new case manager so that she can maybe get some rest from the 24/7 job she's doing. But everybody gets the referrals they need. And of course, Commissioner Williams knows DBHDD is a huge part of that. And we finally kind of made all the connections we need to with that. Because of course, we have the intellectually disabled people who will never be competent. So we need, you know, they end up in our jails too. So we're, we're taking everybody kind of where they are and putting them where they need to be.
Well, I'm so glad, we're so glad to hear this and understand that your connection, Brenda, the whole team, this just, here's the thing, in Rockdale County, I'm not really sure that sometimes the taxpayers are aware of the level of investment that we're making that makes a difference. And then, of course, having a commissioner at the executive level here that's championing this cause and continues to champion, that should never be taken for granted. The last thing I want to point out, the Georgia Trend Magazine, over 159 counties in the state of Georgia, and the smallest geographically county in the state is Rockdale County, and we made it in Georgia Trend. Y'all give them another round of applause. I mean, the work, the work never stops. Uh, and Brenda, we know, and I won't get in trouble, Commissioners, by trying to call each person's name for the sake of time. We want to move forward with our agenda. But every one of them, each of you all are wearing a cape. And you're superheroes on behalf of Rockdale County, saving people lives, making a difference. I heard the numbers, Ms. Ernest, that you gave in reference to the number of young people, the babies that are born into this drug situation, and they, they were born drug-free. Give that a round of applause. Absolutely. Absolutely. Commissioner Washington, we got to move forward, but I want to yield to you and Commissioner Williams to have some comments here.
I don't think they're finished with their presentation.
We've got more. Oh, all right, all right.
So I just want to thank you all for your investment. We are trying to be responsible and fiscally transparent and do the work that you started, Commissioner Williams. So thank you all for your investment. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you all. Come on up, we've got more to go, I understand.
Next slide?
Next slide. Come on up to the microphone so they can hear you.
Hey, good morning.
You've got some good news. We want them to hear it.
Yes. My name's Mary Lou, and I'm the project manager with the Stepping Up. Um, I think it's important to say I'm a citizen of Rockdale County. I am, was born here, and I graduated from high school here. And I've gotten into trouble here, and I've gotten out of trouble here. So I, I am.
I mean, I can really stop there. I won't go long, but I'm telling you, real people helping real people. Continue on.
So I'm invested, and I care about the work I do along with my team. Um, so I'm going to be sharing briefly on the Restorative Justice Complex. You see a picture of the building up on the screen there. And for those who don't know, I think it's important to define what restorative justice is. And it is a response to wrongdoing that prioritizes repairing harm and recognizes that maintaining positive relationships with others is a core human need. So it involves the interconnected concepts of encounter, repair, and transform. Together, they represent a journey toward well-being and wholeness that victims, offenders, and community members can experience. So the Restorative Justice Complex is going to be a very unique, unique center. It's going to be a triad of behavioral health, crisis intervention, and wraparound services all at one convenient location, which is 2800 Highway 138, Conyers, Georgia, 30094. And so what's gonna be included there is a crisis service center ran by Viewpoint Health, and that's gonna be a twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five walk-in clinic for those who are in crisis or substance abuse, one or the other. Right next door is gonna be our awesome Grit and Grace, which we have some of the leaders from Grit and Grace here today. And Grit and Grace is ran by peers for the peers. And they provide all different types of non-clinical, community-based services. They help with vocational training. They provide transportation. They connect to clothing and food and you name it. Grit and Grace does it. And then the third portion of this building is gonna be transitional housing. So you think about when someone usually goes into treatment and they're discharged, you, there's follow-up care. Well, by this model that we have, which is very, a unique model, and it's innovative to this, to the U.S. and to the state of Georgia, that we're bridging the gap because instead of telling someone to be here at this day and this time, they're going next door. So, so we're bridging the gap and hopefully making an impact on those in our, in our community. I think it's important to mention that some of the money that y'all had mentioned earlier from the Covid funds, the county has invested a good bit of that money into this project. And so it has been put in a good place, as Chairman mentioned. We also received a one-point-nine-million-dollar appropriations from Senator Warnock's office. And so that is helping fund this project.
Y'all taking that lightly. Give it a round of applause. I'm not sure if you're tracking.
That's big money. Yes, that's big money, and that's really, and we are still, you know, looking out for other funds to help with the project. So I wanna give a quick update as far as where the project is, and then I will pass on to my next cohort. So Phase One is for Grit and Grace, and they are slated for July and August to be completed by Christmas, by the end of the year. Have them moving ready by the end of the year. Phase Two is gonna include the transitional housing and the crisis service center. And we are hoping to have that put out for bid with a scheduled start date in early twenty-twenty-five with a projected grand opening in early twenty-twenty-six. So that is where we are, and we are super excited. Thank you for your support.
All right, Lou, let's give her a round of applause. Thank you so much. Next slide, please.
Oh, and I forgot this next slide. Yeah, that's, ah!
That's the dream team.
Next slide, please. So when, when you're talking, first and foremost, I wanna thank y'all for giving me an opportunity to be here, not just today, but to be here, period. As the project developer for the Stepping Up Initiative, I don't know if people know what that really means. My name is Bill. I'm a person in long-term recovery. And everything that we're trying to prevent from happening to people, happening to our communities, happening in our jails, in our mental health systems, I represent what that looked like if it failed. And today, I represent what it will look like if we are successful. So one of the greatest privileges of my life is when I became the project developer. All of the things that we're talking about are designed, not from some, I don't know, whimsical thing. They're designed because those are things that were missing when I was terrorizing your community and just going through these systems for forty years of my life. So I know that when we're talking about jails are the greatest de facto, blah, 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 mental health service, that's what the Restorative Justice Complex is about. It's about changing the way that works. When we're talking about people in jails and, and there's a stagnant system and all they do is go up the road, well, you know, we're all dressed up nice and fancy today. Usually, we got on Chuck Taylors or, or some kind of other tennis shoes because we don't wear Stacey Adams when we were. People say, wow, man, why do you wear the white shirts? We don't wear white shirts. Where, where do I see Brenda at most? When we're going in the jail, coming out of the jail, in some kind of crisis call of somewhere in the mud, because this thing is happening in the mud. So when you look at these data and statistics, that what that means is that one thousand two hundred and ninety-five one-hour sessions were provided inside the Rockdale County Jail. That may not be a big deal to you, but because I was there, it's a big deal to me. Because when I was sitting in the jail, I needed to have somebody tell me not just what's wrong with me, I needed somebody to tell me what's right with me. I needed somebody to tell me that if you become a certified peer specialist or a certified addiction specialist or a forensic mentor, that you can get a waiver for your criminal history. You can get a job. You can change your situation. You can represent the change that people wanna see. And if there's anybody out there that says that's not real, well, we're standing here. She's a certified peer specialist. He's a certified peer specialist. She's a certified peer specialist. So people say it ain't changing. It's changing because we're in this room. Right? Okay. We also have digital platforms, and that one thousand six hundred and sixty-seven, those are digital platforms that go into jails for a total of two thousand nine hundred and sixty-two at least one-hour engagements where people were given information on how to change by people who are changing. So with that being said, if you're wondering how they're spending your money, that's how they're spending your money, making a change. Right? When we're talking about overall engagements, if you, next slide, please. Since twenty-twenty, we've done thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and six at least one-hour engagements in person or online. Now, when you look at those numbers, see, we are not traditional. We are non-traditional because traditionally, people in recovery don't design systems. Traditionally, people in recovery are not in this room. We're talking about them. But the Commissioners, they believe that no more for us without us. And they've given us an opportunity to engage and to do what we're designed to do, what God designed us to do. So what that means is that when Covid started, I remember going to Judge Bills and I said, hey, listen, they're gonna shut the world down. And if that happens, our people are going to die. And she said, do you have an idea? I said, yeah, well, Brenda and I were talking, and we think we can do something. And we set up Zoom platforms, and we ran those platforms every day while everybody else is wherever you were. In the morning at eleven o'clock and in the evening at six o'clock, every day. Paula, myself, Tanisha, every day. And that was on the, what, March nineteenth, twenty-twenty? I'm talking about when they shut the earth down and they're still running today, and we ain't missed a day. I mean, that'd be a big deal to you, but it's really a big deal to me because that means that people have something to connect to when they're afraid, when they're confused. They have a place that is theirs. When you're talking about Grit and Grace, it, it's the place where any time I got out of jail, I always went back to the mud because there was no place else to go. We're trying to create a difference, someplace else to go. Where there are other people like you who speak in your native language, which is sometimes frowned upon amongst the church people. But this is the thing, I would, I would rather risk your anger if you'll save my, yeah, all of me. Best Christian language I can put right there. We do a lot of work with co-responders. This is just the beginning. Oh, next slide. This is just the beginning because we have programs that are going to meet people in the emergency rooms, partner with them. We have, we meet with co-responders. We're doing that in real time. The co-responders up there, there's three of them. And Leroy and Thomas and them are co-responders that are baked into that project. And those co-responders have had one hundred and eighty-two engagements in, just in twenty-twenty-four. What we're saying is, we've also got inmates to Entrepreneurs Project that we haven't even launched yet. We're talking about giving people an opportunity to become the directors of their recovery, to become business owners, to become not just people that are trembling around on the ground, but people who are standing up and walking uprightly. These things are very important. We also have the Opening Doors to Recovery Team, which is a three-person intensive case management model with a person in recovery, a family member of a person in recovery, and a clinician. Clinician being right there, peer support being right there. Those people go into the jails, bring people out, partner with the courts to create a system that has some accountability and also gives people an opportunity to engage, safe, appropriate housing, adequate treatment, have a safe, meaningful day, and a better understanding of technology and partner with them for at least one year so that they have a better opportunity to be successful going forward instead of going backwards to jail. If that's not a good idea to you, sounds like a real good idea to me because I was trying to do it though low, and it never worked, right? So with, with that being said, I just wanna say thank you. I wanna say thank you to you guys because we couldn't have done it without your belief in us as a recovery community, without hearing our voice. Because if you can't hear our voice, then I don't know, you know, you're, we're just taking a walk.
Mr. Corruthers, your pain has completely turned into your passion. Y'all give him a round of applause. Absolutely. And we appreciate your presentation, and we appreciate the depth of your presentation because you're speaking on behalf of so many people who are voiceless. And you talked about the repeat, the return of recidivism, and the fact that you went back to the mud. But look at you now. You are a brilliant, bright, shining example of what can be. And this is what helping people is all about. This is what Rockdale County is all about. Give it up for Rockdale County.
And I just wanna say one thing in closing. When you look at that number, that thirty-eight thousand, what that really means is that those are duplicated numbers. These are people who are re-engaging us again and again and again. In traditional services, if people come back, it's a failure. In our services, if people come back, that means we're giving them something they can work with. Anyway, with that being said, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bill. Thank you so much.
And Mr. Chairman, we still need to hear it from the U.S. and the U.S..
Next slide, please. I just wanna say that we have worked very, very hard to build a recovery community that is strong. But we also understand that it would be in vain if we did not involve the community as a whole and if we did not have partnerships the way we have. So we, we really focus on that. The way we, we go about involving the community is through, we have four annual events that we have done every year. The first one is Peace Under the Pavilion, which happens in May of every month in honor of National, National Mental Health Awareness Month. And that is a wellness event, and it promotes self-care and recovery. Also, in August, August thirty-first, every month, Brenda Spearheads our International Overdose Awareness Day Month, and that is coming up. That's our next annual event that will be held over here at the Congress Methodist Church. So you all look forward to that. Please come out. And here, we have a lot of passionate speakers. We bring our, our families from the community who have been affected by overdose. So that is a very heartfelt event. Also, September is Recovery Month, and that is a big time for us. September, we do Year of the Peer, which is an annual red carpet event. And we are celebrating people in recovery. We're celebrating the support that they have, all of our partners who support people in recovery. And that is very important for people to go through and put all that work into their recovery, for them to feel celebrated.
Yes.
So that is a very big event for us as well. And then we, we end the year with our Holiday Mix and Mingle. It's our holiday celebration for our steering committee, all of our partners. We bring them together, and we talk about all of our progress, and we celebrate each other for the work that we're doing. Next slide, please. I say all this to say, and we do want to acknowledge our steering committee members. All of the people who sit down with us from the beginning when we had the Sequential Intercept Map and helped us work on this meeting every month, coming together. And, and I apologize if we, if we missed anyone because we do truly appreciate all of our partners and all of the collaboration that we've had, all of the support. We cannot thank you enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we just wanna say thank you, for real. Sincerely, thank you because it is making a difference. And I, I've watched some of these things on TV. You know, and, and I just wanna say, this is what we're doing right. Everybody else wants to talk about what's wrong with us. This is what's right with us, and it's a privilege to serve with you guys.
Thank you so much. Give him another round of applause. Thank you so much. What a very powerful, powerful presentation. I'm gonna yield to you, Commissioner Williams, if you have any additional comments, then we'll come to Commissioner Washington.
Well, you can see that they are passionate.
Yes.
Committed.
Yes.
Dependable.
That's right.
And they have my highest admiration for the work that they have done. I will tell you also that because of their work, I have been invited to participate on the Advisory Board of the Council of State Governments Justice Center out of New York. And it really is their work. And, and because of that, I've been asked to be on that board. And so I honor them and appreciate the work that they do. I think my favorite thing is when we have an opportunity to hear from some of the people's lives who have been touched. That just tells you, you know, there's a lot to quantitative data, but there's, you can't have that without the qualitative data that shows and tells the story that's individual and personalized. So I just wanna say thank you to this wonderful team.
All right, all right. Commissioner Washington.
Absolutely. First of all, thank you all to you. Your hard work is commendable, needed. And I'm very, very proud to be on the board that is helping bring this to fruition. People talk about criminal justice reform, and we, and you all, are doing what it takes to not just transform the lives of the people that you touch, but communities in general, and society as a whole. You all are doing the hard work, and I, I greatly admire that. Judge Bills, you know, I've been in front of you, and the work that you're doing is commendable, not just in this county, but throughout the state. So that because you are leading the way in the Judicial Center and the, giving them a platform and a, a model that can be emulated throughout the state of Georgia and this country. So I really appreciate and admire that. Commissioner Williams, it's got to be a point of great pride to see a vision come to fruition in such great in, in greatness. You have been an inspiration because you stuck to it. When you started this, when nobody was really talking about mental health and connecting the dots. And you stuck to it, and then we have this great program, and it's got to be a source of great pride. And we are extremely proud of you. I know everywhere I go, well, we have Commissioner Williams, and she, I don't even have to talk about criminal justice reform because she has it. Thank you for the leadership that, that comes with this, and I, I truly admire the leadership.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Washington. Thank you, Dr. Williams, and all of Judge Bills and the Dream Team. Thank you all. When we get these types of presentations, it really just removes all of the moments of any level of negativity or doubt or wondering what we are doing with those federal funds and how we're putting these things to work. So many people spend so much time looking for the bad. But when we can focus on the good that's happening in our community and through communication, I'm an old schooler, so I believe in communicating and talking. We may not get everything perfect right every day, but I think we can work it out if we can talk it out. So let's give them another round of applause. Thank you all. Thank you for the work that you're doing. Thank you for the work that you're doing. And again, as the old Baptist preacher would say, ain't nobody mad but the devil. We've got another presentation, and Executive Director Rutledge, we're gonna be celebrating older Americans.
Yes, we will. And so we've got a few that'll make their way to the podium as we transition out. And so we've got a few that'll make their way to the podium as we transition out.
Thank you again, Judge. Thank you for being here this morning. Thank you.
Okay, looks like we're ready now. Director Redmond.
Good morning, Chairman, and my commissioners. So today, we are going to come before you to celebrate Older Americans Month. So it will not be me doing the presentation. Instead, Deputy Director Morgan and Manager Suzanne Clark, who does great work in our, at the senior center, everyday hands-on with the citizens of Rockdale County, will do the presentation, and then we'll have a video to follow that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for letting us be here today. It is wonderful to be part of all of this. We have some great news in Rockdale County, don't we?
Yes, we do.
And to celebrate another group of people, we've celebrated the student athletes, we've celebrated recovery, so now let's celebrate our seniors. In May was Older Americans Month.
Did y'all hear? Let's celebrate our seniors. Wait a minute. Absolutely. Go ahead, Director.
So our Older Americans Month started sixty-one years ago, and that was set in place because of a concern concerning older citizens within the United States. And of course, many of you know that nineteen sixty-five is when the Older Americans Act was actually put in place, which helps us with concerns for community resources for those that are sixty and over. And I wanted to introduce Suzanne Clark. She is our expert with activities that the seniors love very much. She's been with us six years.
Y'all give Suzanne a round of applause.
And to show you how much work she does, last month was Older Americans Month. We completed two-hundred-and-sixty-three activities during the month, and we had some special events. One was called Spark, which emphasizes health and community resources. That stands for, I have to say it fast, sickness prevention achieved through regional collaboration. Okay, there we go. I have to say it faster, I'll forget. But that's a Johnson &amp; Johnson evidence-based program that is put in place for for us to work with. Did a Mother's Day recognition. They've done several different kinds of shopping trips. We also have onsite cooking, where we have a demonstration cooking for nutrition. And one of our pride and joys is to make sure that we're working with the Atlanta Regional Commission on evidence-based program, which Suzanne has really become, she has took that under her wing and become an expert in that area. And we had evidence-based Tai Chi classes for our seniors, and we continue those evidence-based programs. And just real quickly, what evidence-based basically means is that it's, it has research to back it up. It has been shown through the published research that it works. And so we're putting those programs in places in our community. So we, one of the things that we wanted to show you in particular is that Suzanne plans the Celebrate Older Americans presentation, which honors those people that are ninety years and older. We had twenty-nine that were participating this year, and she brought the proclamation that was that was written. We appreciate that.
Yes.
And to honor these people.
Round of applause, ninety and older.
And just to let you know, in our county, there's less than one percent that make it to the ninety-year age. In in Rockdale, there's fifteen percent that are sixty-five and older. So it kind of gives you a frame of reference of how really special that is.
Yes.
And we we had a great program yesterday, which I'm gonna talk about toward the end, but a program where youth came in and worked with our seniors in an intergenerational capacity. And so that was, that happened yesterday, and that was just enlightening to see the ladies and interacting with those young teenagers. And so we appreciate that. So we wanted to show you the video, so if you could cue that.
Okay.
This month, we celebrate the immense contribution to our country and stand firm in our efforts to ensure that every American can age with dignity and community that they deserve.
What you saw toward the end of the video is Suzanne asked each of the seniors that were that were not involved, that were able to come to the event, to tell their story.
Okay.
Some of them we had to cut off a little bit. After about fifteen minutes. But they really enjoyed that, and I appreciate all of her work very much. With it. Okay, and just wanted to say thank you to our director, Director Redmond, for all the support. Parks and Recreation is our department, and Senior Services is a division of that department.
Well, we say thank you to all of you, absolutely. Thank you, Director Redmond, through your leadership, working very closely with Deputy Director Morgan, and having a new sharp asset and tool in our box here in in that of Miss Susan and the work that she does through all the activities. But let me just shift back to Deputy Director Morgan for a moment because Deputy Director Morgan, you've been in Senior Services here at Rockdale County. You really have become the face of the operation. Director Redmond constantly talks about how you champion the cause over there, and he can focus on all the other things that fall upon his umbrella. You know each and every one of those, our seniors, you know them personally, and they believe you, you are their leader, and you represent Rockdale well. And I gotta say that, Commissioners, our relationship and partnership with the Atlanta Regional Commission that allows us to have additional funding so we can bring resources to the multiple number of senior citizens in our community. And she just quotes, rattles those stats off her lips like it's nothing to it because she knows them through and through. Give Susan another round of applause. Yes, yes. That's the kind of leadership that we have. And 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 this, I gotta say this, I just gotta throw this in there because I think sometimes, and I've been saying it, I'm gonna continue to say this, I think that sometimes people in the community forget that really the county is a business, and we do have a website. There are so many great things that are happening and how we're servicing our citizens throughout Rockdale County. And I just encourage folks that if you didn't know or you don't know, click on the website, and you'll learn so many things between Parks and Recreation, Public Relations, and all the various departments that make up county government. And I'd be remiss if I don't mention the work that our judicial partners do to really, I mean, a lot of places, they don't give this kind of deep dive with restorative justice centers and mental illness and accountability court and all those things. In Rockdale, we're doing it, and we're making a difference. If you want to be a part of the solution, step on board. Give him another round of applause. Thank you so much.
Parks and Rec would like to invite the community to an event that is coming up called Art for the Ages. It's gonna be held on July the eighteenth.
Okay.
And it's at Costly Mill Event Center. This is a collaborative event that we're doing, and it's an intergenerational art, dance, and fashion show that we're gonna be doing where the youth and the seniors are gonna be participating together. So we would really like for you to come out for that event. And I'd like to close today by just, I can't not mention this, I just want to recognize Dan Morgan, who is getting ready to retire. He has been a real advocate for us. Every time I call him on the phone, he is always there for helping us with our resources, and the Senior Services really appreciates him.
Yes.
Thank you, Deputy Director Morgan and Manager Clark. I just wanted to close by saying, the reason that, so this first came about, and Deputy Director Morgan said we need to do a proclamation, everybody was on board. I said, okay, what date you want to bring everybody down? She said, no, it's not gonna work. As you saw in the video, it was a large number of people there. They love the senior center. If they don't have to leave the senior center, they don't want to leave the senior center. They don't want to come to another building. They said they wanted to do it there, so that's why we did it there, and that's why they didn't come to the Assembly Hall. I just wanted to point that out. So we made a separate time to come and acknowledge their their Older Americans Month. And just to piggyback on the Arts for the Ages program, it is an intergenerational program, and we received a grant through GRPA to complete this program. So this is grant-funded, it's totally grant-funded, and you will see some teenagers interacting with the seniors. You may see do the twist, and you may see the stanky leg all-in-one dance. So it's gonna be a very interesting show and something different, something new. Yeah, thank you.
What time? What time is it?
Ten AM. Yes, July eighteenth.
All right.
Costly Mill. Ten to two, Costly Mill Event Center.
All right, very good. Thank you, Director, and thank you to all of you all. You're right, Director Redmond, for the seniors in our community, the senior center is their epic center. They really enjoy being there and being a part of the robust activities that we have them going. It's not a place where people are just creeping around. They're they're actually active and making things happen, absolutely. All right, we've got to move forward with our agenda this morning, Commissioners. I want to move now to item number four, the approval of the agenda. What is your pleasure?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I second that motion.
It has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item, number five, approval of the minutes from May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, and June fourth of twenty twenty-four. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. There's no unfinished business this morning. We're moving right on to the consent agenda, item number seven. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
I move to approve the items on the consent agenda as listed.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. That brings us right down to item number eight, which is our regular agenda. Executive Director Rutledge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item two-seventy-nine is rezoning case twenty twenty-four dash zero three, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia, as amended by rezoning ten seventy-nine Southwest Johnson Road from C two, general commercial, to R M residential multifamily to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading this morning.
I move to defer this ordinance until the next regularly scheduled BOC voting session.
I second that motion. It has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item, please.
Chairman, Commissioner Williams, were you in favor or opposed?
No, I'm opposed.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Item two-eighty is rezoning case twenty twenty-four dash zero eight, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia, as amended by rezoning nineteen fifty-five Flat Shoals Road from R one, single-family residential district to C one, local commercial district, to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
So I move to defer this ordinance until the next regularly scheduled BOC voting session.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item, please.
Okay, item two-eighty-two is a resolution of the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners appointing the directors of the Development Authority of Rockdale County for terms commencing on a date certain provided for staggered terms of said directors, consistent with the provisions of Senate Bill one-seventy-one, which is OCGA thirty-six dash sixty-two dash four, subsection A, and as further provided by the Georgia state law. During this past legislative session, the legislative, the legislators changed the way the local development authorities are set up. Basically, that what it says is that you can no longer just continue to serve in a term without being properly reappointed, and then change the effective date, which would now be July first. So you have the members of the Development Authority listed below with their respective terms.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure here?
I move to approve this resolution as presented.
I second the motion.
We have an amazing development.
It has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any additional comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item, please.
All right, item two-eighty-three is a resolution declaring an additional temporary holiday of July fifth, twenty twenty-four.
I move to approve the resolution as presented.
I second that motion.
Did you hear all of our employees say, yes? It has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any additional comments or questions?
Well, let me just comment that I did ask some questions about this. And, you know, could, why would we need to give this as a holiday? I know that the
Temporary holiday.
Right, a temporary holiday. But the answer I got was, we have so many people who want to take PTO on that day that we can't really function as a county.
Right.
So
It just makes sense.
It just makes sense.
It just makes sense. And and thank you, Commissioner, because we, honestly, over the years, we've done this a few times before.
Absolutely.
And this is, this is when we can really kind of relish in being Commissioners' cause we get to work with talent management and our chief operating officer to be able to communicate back to our employees that we are putting them first. This is a great time for them to be with their families. Instead of them exhausting their PTO, we'll just make it a temporary county holiday and allow them to spend time. Some of these folks are gonna travel. It's all about family, and that's what this whole spirit of this time is. Commissioner Washington, you were gonna mention something.
I forgot.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Executive Director Rutledge, where does that bring us now?
We are down to public comment, and we've received one red card, so I'll go ahead and read the disclaimer as it's coming to you.
All right.
As a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments relative to any issues that are currently going through the public hearing process, matters that are in active litigation, political campaigning, or partisan politics will not be heard in this meeting. Speakers are to address the chairman, not each other or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers and/or members of the audience shall be permitted.
Thank you. First up is Ms. Nicole Litterman. Ms. Nicole, come on up. Absolutely. Glad to have you this morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
You can pull that flexible mic down so they can hear you.
And I'm gonna make sure I'm timing myself. I am here on behalf of the young athletes and the elderly of Mountain Valley Estate. I am here on behalf of the sick Martha Brown, Tom Brown, former Rockdale County fireman, his wife Lynn Norton. I'm here on behalf of Calvin O'Neill and Sophie Lowe, myself, my five children. I'm here on behalf of the Beasley's. I'm here on behalf of all of the residents of Mountain Valley Estates that sits off of Highway one eighty, one thirty-eight. I'm here by myself because some of us are immigrants, some of us have spouses on hospice, some of us have cancer, some of us have children who are in programs right now, and I am the only one that is available. We have, right now, septic tanks collapsing. We have, right now, the former fire chief, he has all three levels of his home collapsing. I have two levels of my home collapsing. The Beasley's have half of their kitchen collapsing. All of our All of our crawl spaces are filled with water, sediment and silt. All of our basements have sediment and silt blowing through the walls because we are in a rolling topography half underground. Why, you ask? There is a development on Highway one thirty-eight where there are two hundred and fifteen townhomes going in and they left no type of buffer zone. They left no type of security for our subdivision. They came in and they plowed it all to the ground. We came to the county with no help for a month. No responses, no answers, no anything from stormwater, the commissioners, code enforcement. We begged. There are ten homes right now that all have foundation issues. The Browns have put out thirty-two thousand dollars and counting. My husband and I just took out a twenty-five thousand dollar loan with five children. I am a cancer patient. I have not worked in ten years. I'm also a former claims adjuster. I'm no bum. I've worked with Patrice Cullors, with Black Lives Matter, Leisha Brooks with the Southern Poverty Law Center, the National Conference for Community Injustice, the Shoa Foundation, which was ran by Steven Spielberg. I've done two um, documentaries of such. I have lived for my community. I have been in bed for two months because I got COVID a few months ago and I've had little to no energy. However, I am here today. I'm here today because the county has offered us absolutely no help and basically told us the law is all we have.
Ms. Litterman, I want to say thank you for coming out. It was good to put a face with the name in person. Thank you for coming.
You had my face blocked on Facebook.
I certainly did. Thank you for coming out this morning. If you want to hear, if you came for a solution, because you. Let me say this to you. This is a little different than what I've been doing over the last couple of years, but I'm going to give you my closing remarks in just a second. But let me just say this to you. Several of our uh, directors of Rockdale County, and that this is, I gave you an opportunity to, so you could speak this morning doing public comment. But now I want you to listen to it. Because I believe that you are a strong advocate. In fact, your closing remarks included three organizations that you have been a strong, proud advocate. And one thing I know about an advocate, they want results. So stay with me. An advocate is looking for results. You came in here this morning to get results. I want you to pay attention because I am the strongest advocate in all of Rockdale County. So watch this. Stand up Deputy Director Johnson, Director Kelly, Director Njoku, Director Deputy Director Davis, Chief McDaniel. You see, these people are professionals with credentials and this board is well aware of the situation in Mountain Valley subdivision. And last night, because everybody in here knows that I'm a frequent visitor, thank you staff, you can have a seat, of Publix. Last night as I made my way home.
Oh, Sophie.
I stopped in Publix and I saw my old former neighbor.
Ms. Lowe.
Ms. Lowe. And she shared with me a different account. Now, I've already been in Mountain Valley. I've been on Pine Long Road.
You lived there, yeah.
I sure did, for eleven long years. And I know the majority of the people that are there. Here's what I'm saying to you this morning. If you're still interested in results and doing things the right way, as I mentioned earlier, we have a website. There's an office around the corner. We have an opportunity for folks to come in and communicate with us and talk to us about how to go through the policies and procedures where we can make a difference. Let me finish.
I'll let you finish, but as long as I can rebuttal to that.
No ma'am, this is not a debate. I wanted to make sure as we heard you.
Because we've done that.
Okay, so here's, here's what I'm saying. You've not been to my office. You, you have not physically been in my office where we can sit down and have a conversation about how to find solutions beyond my staff that just stood up, who's all been there and verified the information. What I can't do as the chairman and the CEO of this county, I cannot allow anyone to come in and put out misinformation about what's going on.
Because we've come into your county offices and your people went out the door.
Let me share with you.
Taryn Simpkins went out the door. We've come into code enforcement and they told us to come back, that you guys were in meetings. We've come in in numbers and I don't know what number, what you gave, what, what Sophie said, but we have been waiting. Your, your Sherry Commissioner, your, your post commissioner came out and she offered to use taxpayer monies off the books to shut me up. So what I don't understand, and, and that was through Howard Campbell.
I'm not going to shut you up, but I'm telling you this conversation is over.
What I'm saying is, is we have gone months since February, sir.
You can make your way around to my office and you can schedule an opportunity to come sit down and talk. If you, if you're the advocate that I know that you are and you're interested in a solution.
And you can, you can respond this way in front of your staff? You can, but I have my emails, my phone records to prove that I have come to your office specifically. I have come to your first post commissioner. She's been out to my home and been in my home specifically. So don't, don't.
Thank you Ms. Litterman. Thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. The next speaker is Mr. Kellacheck. Come on up Mr. Kellacheck. Just sit there Reddick, you get it. Thank you.
Morning Chairman.
Good morning.
Commissioners.
Morning.
Directors, deputy directors, citizens of Rockdale County. George Kellacheck, your chairperson for the Rockdale Sewer Water Conservation District. This morning, I provided you some additional information. I have been appointed to be the chairperson for the Upper Old Mogi Basin Area Council, which regarding all the waters that are in Clayton, Fulton, DeKalb, Rockdale, Gwinnett and Henry County. I, on June the sixth, and Mr. Vaughn was present, I attended the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District, executive board meeting and governing board meeting. Uh, Chairman, I believe there's a constitutional law that you should not be on your phone while I'm speaking.
You're making, I, I got, thank you Commissioner, thank you so much. If you're making your presentation, the clock is ticking. So I would suggest that you continue on. I'm running the county. Thank you. And I'm listening to you at the same time. I have a skillset called the ability to multitask. I'm not interested in a law, I'm interested in people.
Oh, okay, fine. All right, I provided you the executive committee meeting and the governing board meeting minutes, along with the planning principles and management challenges. You will have a excellent voice with the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning Commission and also the Atlanta Regional Commission. I'm here to help in any way I can. Also, Senate Bill four seventy-two, Act number one fifty-three, is your General Assembly Act, providing in nineteen ninety-five to create the Rockdale County Water and Storage Authority. We would greatly appreciate if you would appoint members to this authority as per this Senate bill. Given neglected, do so. I don't know why. We have sixty-six and a half million dollars in assets in the enterprise fund for the water authority. We feel as though that we should have a seat so we can look at these funds and assure that they're being spent in the correct manner. On July twenty eighteen, you came to my property with Todd Cosby. And regarding my stormwater issue, you said do not go to the media or do not get an attorney. You're a man of action. Nothing has been done. I'd like to sit down at the table again with a cup of coffee and let us resolve this issue.
Thank you Mr. Kellacheck and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Thank you so much. All right, that wraps up public comment. We're moving right into board comment. I'll start with you Commissioner Washington.
Thank you. Um, my first thing is my uh, series on rocking pets. Um, I would, I am happy to inform everybody that Willow, the, the dog from the last series, yes, presentation, thank you, um, has been adopted as well as her cut, uh, her cut, what is it? What is it? Puppy. Puppy has also been adopted. So um, and somebody said it was because of the video. So I'm gonna take that and we're gonna move forward with the next iteration. Here in Rockdale County, we love our furry friends, but there are so many of them that need a home. So I'm showcasing Rockdale County Animal Services to raise awareness on all the wonderful pets to rescue. Hi, I'm Commissioner Sherry Washington and this is Adopt a Rocking Pet. So who do we have today?
We have Muffy today. Muffy's going to be our two-year-old female. She's about two years old. We did get her from an abandoned house in the community. So she is a resident of Conyers. Um, she's very free motivated. She did come in with a brother as well. They both were abandoned, so they're still here on us. They've been here since about eight fifteen or seven. So they've been here a while, they really need to find their homes. But she's overall a great girl.
She needs a good home. She's very loving and she will go get that ball. Well, first I'd like to say that since our last episode of Willow and her baby have been adopted, so I'm really excited about that. But also I would like to talk about the cat policy. Could you tell us about your cat policy?
Yes, I sure can. So in Conyers in Rockdale, the cats aren't considered wildlife here, so they are able to survive on their own, whether they have mom or not. Unfortunately, if you do run into one that's sick or hurt, we will go ahead and assist and take care of that for you. But we also have a clean air program to help with the population as well.
So teaching our timid.
That's going to be the trap, neuter and return program, which is where basically we trap the cats and take them to our local vet. They stay and neuter them and then you return them back to the wild where they survive.
Okay, good.
Thank you for watching Rockdale Twenty-three. Follow us on social media at Rockdale Doves or YouTube at Rockdale Twenty-three.
So the kitten was there because it was too young to be able to survive without its mother and we named that kitten Oz.
Oh my gosh, you did.
While I was there, they did not get that. We filmed that part, but that didn't make the video.
Well, that kitten is sure to turn into a tiger because she's going to be tough.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Um, but I was, I, thank you PR for helping with that. It's, it's one of my favorite things to do. Um, the next thing on my list, uh, the, the lights on the Sigmund Road widening project are up. They're functioning. I was going. And you know, it, and it seems like a small thing, but when you've lived off of Sigmund Road for as long as I have, um, to see those lights go up and to know I was such a advocate of them being ornate. And then Sunday, as I was going to church, I was going, of course, up Sigmund Road and the ladies, there were ladies that were doing their Sunday morning walk on the big sidewalks coming down Sigmund Road. So I, it's, it's so good to see a lot of the things that we have been working so hard for finally coming to fruition. So that was really great. Um, Friday Wind Down, another um, Parks and Rec production. Uh, we had a great time. I don't know if that's one of the reasons why my voice is the way it is, but we definitely did. Um, and they, they're starting to brand the, the, the event. So they had um, fixtures that said Friday Wind Down was really good. Of course, Events by Gas did another outstanding um, promotion. They had charcuterie boxes that you could purchase this time and um, oh my God, the cupcakes that you could purchase. Everything was another really, really great event. Who was the band?
The Grand Scheme.
Yeah, The Grand Scheme, great band. They also um, have been out here before, so we had a really, really good time. Um, the For the Culture Car and Bright Show had all these pictures. That was another great event. Um, they had this one car, they had like fifty awards and one was a goat because it was the greatest of all time. Great event, um, a lot of vendors, different vendors. Um, just another really wholesome event. People of all ages coming out, enjoying Rockdale County, enjoying the food. That was a, another good time. The City of Conyers, uh, Michael Jackson review, well attended. People were screaming like it was really Michael Jackson. Oh my God, I was like, wait a minute. Please don't faint on the not Michael Jackson. But um, it was, it was a good, good time. Um, I had a video, but I'm not going to show it. Uh, the Covington Area Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated had our annual scholarship dinner, dinner in Rouge. Margaret Moore Jackson is on the stroll team and I had taken a video of her in, during the strolls. I'm also on the stroll team, but I've had this little part-time job that has kept me from going to stroll practice. So um, I would, next, the next um, next time that we meet, I will have that video. She did an outstanding job and it was a lot of fun. Um, but my highlight of the week was the Fire Station Ten opening. You know, I, I know this started in twenty sixteen before I was a commissioner, but we've talked about it all, seven years and six months that I have been here. We have planned for it for seven years and six months. Um, we've gotten prepared for it. Two great fire chiefs working in tandem to make it something amazing. And not only does, is it going to do us proud financially because of our insurance rating, but, and have the safety for the northern part of Rockdale County, but it's also going to make us proud aesthetically. It is a beautiful building with the red fire doors that open on the outside and it's just something that the citizens of Rockdale County should be truly proud of, especially the fact that it's debt-free, it's been paid by Splosh. So I'm, I'm, so I was so proud to be a part of that. So thank you. And I think that's all I have until Dr. Williams reminds me of something.
All right, Commissioner Williams.
So yesterday was really phenomenal. It was Fire Station Number Ten and the ribbon cutting. Um, it, it was, it, all those things. It's aesthetically a great addition to, along Highway one thirty-eight. Financially, it will benefit those residents with their homeowner's insurance and it will be able to provide services um, in a much more responsive, time considerate way. And so to Chief Morgan, former Chief Morgan, and to Chief Mac, um, thank you so much both for your leadership in Rockdale and in being forward-thinking and always looking for the best for our citizens. So we appreciate that. Um, couple of comments about our restorative justice complex that Mary Lou presented on today when we met with Commissioner Tanner um, a month or so ago. Because of the setup with our peer support recovery on one side and our mental health treatment and substance abuse treatment on the other, this is a first in the state of Georgia. And he called it innovative and unique. And um, that wasn't my thinking. It, it just sort of evolved because of the input of many different people, including Judge Mumford, who really wanted that, a space for some beds so that people had some. Judge Mumford, who really wanted that, a space for some beds, so that people had someplace they could go rather than sitting in jail until some, something came up. And the stepping-up team, you know, I feel like a proud mama, you know, with, with all of them. They are a phenomenal asset to what we're doing here in Rockdale County. We have had, I can remember when I first organized the steering committee, and one of our consultants said to me, "You know that three or four people are gonna end up doing all the work." Well, this is before we had any staff assigned. No, that is not what happened. We had forty people and more, sometimes more than fifty people, attending those steering committee meetings, taking on leadership committee roles, participating and, and really participating in, in all of what you're seeing now. What is it we need? What are the gaps? Where do we need to go? And the whole committee worked really hard. Senior services, I just couldn't help but think, "Oh, I guess I'm part of that." And those senior citizens and, and understanding how valuable that family and connection is for seniors and in keeping a healthy life, which brings me to our Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, and I have my Alzheimer's Awareness shirt on, which Chairman, your tie coordinates perfectly.
Yes.
And we did not discuss this ahead of time. I know that I presented some last, our last meeting about it, so I'd like to, there's a short video, and then I will make a few comments.
Okay, let's watch the video.
Ah, there we go. So, that, if you saw, just some myths and some facts really quickly about Alzheimer's, and perhaps they can put it on Channel 23, you know, in between programming, so that people can see that. One of the things they talked about is, is anyone can participate in clinical studies. And I had forgotten that I was participating in the Emory Clinical Study on dementia and that kind of thing, and they're following people through their, through their lifespan and trying to get more research on connecting, you know, your, your physical activities, your family connections, your mental health, your physical health, and to see if there's a connection there with any, many different forms of dementia, Alzheimer being the most common. There we go. Last week, we had a, a picture up that showed, and I have that on my phone, just a second. Okay, last week's little picture talked about, well, that is last week's little picture, now that I'm looking at it. I wonder if they have the one that's for today, because the one for today just builds on the one from last week, but it's tips to boost your health as you age, and it's, while the first one talked about managing your high blood pressure and sleeping well and eating well, this one offers specific things such as get moving, try gardening, biking or walking, choose healthy foods rich in nutrients, manage stress, try yoga or, or write, keep a journal, learn something new. And this was, this was the one that, you know, that I'm always about, learning something new. Take a, take a class, join a club, do, you know, something to keep your mind going, and that's also a way to have connections with family and friends, and then go to the doctor regularly. So, taking care of our physical health and our mental health is really key to those senior years that really complements what Deputy Director Morgan was talking about today. So, those are my comments.
All right, very good. And both you and Commissioner Washington was absolutely correct. Yesterday was a big day in Rockdale County, and that's a perfect segue, because we want to see the video from the grand opening of Fire Station Number 10, 3100 Highway 138 North in Rockdale County. So, PR is getting that video ready, and we're gonna take a look at a little bit of highlights from yesterday's grand opening and ribbon cutting of Fire Station 10. June 10th, 2024, what a day to remember here in Rockdale County, and especially for the north side of Rockdale County, the grand opening and ribbon cutting of Fire Station Number 10, under the leadership of Chief Marion McDaniel, our Fire Chief for Fire Rescue in Rockdale County.
I love about the fire station is the fact that it is a product of the SPOSS Oversight Committee. It is very important to us that we do have these oversight committees, because they allow us to know what is important to our citizens, and it's not anything that we're saying that we need from the Board of Commissions, it's what you all are saying you need and you want in this community, and that's where you want your business to grow.
This wouldn't happen without all hands on deck.
Fire Rescue has served the citizens of Rockdale County with non-station since 2009. When we talk about response times, we've been exceeding those response times. I joined Rockdale County Fire Rescue October 2nd of 2017, and once I got here, this, the talk of this station was already in the works. As you heard, 2016, the concept of Fire Station 10 started with Dan Morgan, and I couldn't think of a better way, as he nears his retirement date of...
Next week.
Next week or Tuesday?
Uh, the, next Thursday.
Next Thursday will be his last day here in Rockdale County, and what better way to end his career than the opening of Station 10? So, please! This is such a great occasion. You know, I've, we've been driving up and down this road to Cosette Mill for several years now, watching first the purchase of the property and then the foundation and as the walls torn off. This has been really fun, and I love the new design.
A great day for all the citizens of Rockdale County, especially on the north side, as we celebrate the grand opening and the ribbon cutting of Fire Station Number 10, 3100 Highway 138 North in Rockdale County.
Thank you for watching Rockdale 23.
Chief Morgan, Chief McDaniel, give them a round of applause. Now, I often talk about the number of text messages I received from the community. Last night, again, as I went into public, I had folks that were really excited, because they live on the north side, they were just really excited that the fire station is there. I did receive some good text messages from people excited about having this facility on the north side. And there was one older gentleman, Commissioner Williams, that remembered what I said. I don't know how he got the message, but when I mentioned that, it's not just a celebration of the fire station, but it's an opportunity for the Sheriff's Office to have a central hub for those deputies that work in that zone. They can go there, relieve themselves, they can do their reports, they can engage with the community, and having the law enforcement present, you got, you got the fire trucks there, but you got a police car kind of hanging out sometimes at the fire station, and that's a central hub for them to be able to move and lower their response times in the northern district of the county. So, it's a big, big deal. We've talked so much about the ISO ratings impacting the citizens all across Rockdale, but especially in the northern region. This is a big deal. Another segue for me to talk about our outgoing director and former fire chief, I believe, Director Morgan, come on up to the podium. I'll give him a round of applause. I think this is your last official BLC meeting, is that right?
That is correct.
Chief Morgan, Director Morgan, you served as our fire chief for many, many years, and at that time, you wore two hats. You were the fire chief and you were the director of Emergency Management Agency. You transitioned over to your passion, which is EMA. Now, you're serving as the director of EMA, still working very closely with Chief McDaniel and the Fire and Rescue Department. In your own words, before you depart, tell us about your time at Rockdale County, and you're seeing the unveiling of Fire Station Number 10, which started under your leadership.
Well, thank you for that. I've been sitting there thinking about that. It's good to have a plan, and this plan started many years ago. I don't know if people remember, if that fire station looks familiar. Before my tenure as fire chief, we built Fire Station Number 6 in 2006, Fire Station Number 9 in 2009, put there specifically to aid coverage in certain areas of the county. We rebuilt Number 3 where it sits. We moved Station 2. All of this time, 10 was on the books, at least in the fire department plan, and to see it come to fruition right here as I'm leaving, lets me know that the plan will continue forward to cover the citizens of the county where they need, where we need coverage, where we need to expand our coverage, and so, yes, there is a plan, and it makes me very proud to have been a part of that.
Well, let me say to you, in fact, I'm gonna, I'm gonna yield, I'm gonna yield to Commissioner Washington and then to Commissioner Williams, specifically as we address you on your final BLC. Commissioner Washington.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You seem like you're taking this transition well. You're smiling. Even when it was hot, he was smiling yesterday, so, but you have done a phenomenal job. And it, once again, it's, it's got to be good to be able to see a vision manifest itself and come to fruition right before you leave, so you've done a good job.
Thank you.
And I wish you well in whatever future endeavors that you will have.
Thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
So, a lot has been done since I took office. I'm not sure I was even in office, it might have been before I was even sworn in, that Chief Morgan drove me around the county, showed me every fire station there was. I remember walking into Station 2 and Station 3. Those were horrible. They were just horrible. And so, since then, we've built a new Station 2 and built a new Station 3, and now we have our Station 10. And I think you, you addressed it so perfectly. You, you have a plan, you have a, you know, that's very strategic in placement and timing and funding, that it's very gratifying to see it come together.
Very much so.
And you are going to be missed.
Thank you.
So, happy retirement. It is an adjustment. I, I really was retired for a year or so. And it was a big adjustment, but you, it sounds like you have things planned out, you and your wife, and travel and fun and...
That's the point.
So, congratulations.
Chief Morgan.
Sir.
Director Morgan. Rockdale County is a better place.
I know.
Because of you.
I know.
Y'all give them a round of applause.
If I could have a moment of privilege, I've worked here 24 years, and from the employee standpoint, where we were 24 years ago to where we are today as employees, you talked about this extra temporary holiday, but I don't know if people realize, we have more holidays, better pay, more personal days, sick time now. We didn't have that, that long ago, and also part of the SPOSS. We're getting a new 911 center. So, the, the effort and funds put in by the government, if you, y'all are the head of that, have been outstanding over my tenure here, and I just wanted to applaud y'all for that, because it is a very good place to work. And if I could steal a little bit of your thunder, in my mind, there's only two kinds of people. Those who wish they worked for Rockdale County and those who work here long enough to wish they could retire from working for Rockdale County.
Director, Director Morgan, we need some muck there, please.
We all agree, Director Morgan.
I, I tell you, this has been another power-packed meeting, a very positive meeting throughout. I believe that this has given us an opportunity to highlight and pay tribute to why Rockdale County is rocking and rolling in the right direction, and it's just the reason why we're all reimagining Rockdale County. I do want to take a moment to say this, because I think it's important, as I continue to remind our citizens and constituents, that we do have a website, we do have an open-door policy. You can reach us, you can come and sit down and talk to us. And although we are, I believe, the only shop in town that offers a platform for public comment and has a microphone and a camera, we ask that you come into our offices, work with our schedules, and schedule an opportunity to meet with us. We will dispatch our very talented staff of directors and deputy directors and many employees out throughout all of our departments to come out and put eyes on, on what's happening in our community. As your chairman, I pride myself in being accessible, responsive, and hands-on. I do want to share with you that during a Tuesday morning meeting, in the small amount of time that we have, it's really not the opportunity, or is it the setting, to really take a deep dive into a lot of the issues that we have. This opportunity is to highlight and bring status updates as to where we are as a county and where we're going. So, I say to all, if you're interested, and I believe most people want the right thing, they want to do the right thing, and we all are passionate about Rockdale County, and people are looking for results and solutions. And if you are solution-oriented, we encourage you to come and sit down, and let's work through it and talk to some of those issues. We believe that we have the best talented team of directors and, and staff throughout our county workforce. We're not perfect. We funnel the ball, we drop the ball, but if you communicate with us, we'll do everything we can to fix it and to make it right. In addition to that, I want to make sure we wrap up on a high note. Guess what, ladies? It's Father's Day this Sunday. I want all the fathers in the room to please stand. Every father, y'all give these fathers, give these dads, give these dads a round of applause. Absolutely, absolutely. Happy Father's Day to all of our fathers. I had the honor, the, the honor and the pleasure this past Sunday, Commissioners, to be a part of the Macedonia Baptist Church. As Dr. Abbott, who is the senior pastor, she and all of the ladies of Macedonia pay tribute to all of the men, the fathers of their church, and I mean, they really served them, where they rolled out the red carpet. It was such a grand affair. They had it over at our JP Car Facility. I had an opportunity to serve as the keynote speaker. And one of the things that I was able to do in this non-governmental setting was just be as real as I wanted to be, because I'm a father of four. And I won't go through all of what the speech entailed, but I will tell you my closing remarks. And so, brace yourself, okay? As I talked to the church, I, I suggested that they brace themselves. This upcoming Father's Day, I shared a person... Uh, this upcoming Father's Day, uh, I shared a personal story about eight years ago. I had all four of our children, uh, gathered together at our house and it was about a week before Father's Day. And I said to my wife and to my four children, "I'm excited about this upcoming Father's Day and there's a few things I want to make in this announcement. Uh, don't buy me no cheap cologne. Don't get me an ugly tie. Don't buy me no socks. I'm grateful for all of the gifts and the thought, but I want you to really think about it because Father's Day don't ever get the amount of love that Mother's Day get." And I went on and said, "Don't give me no T-shirts. Don't buy me a pack of drawers. I want you to get me a gift that you're going to think about, that you put some thought in and that you're going to really know what daddy likes." So as you go out, don't wait to the last minute to celebrate your fathers. Get him, get them, whether it's a stepfather, father, father figure, or mentor, or uncle, or big brother, get them something you know all about him. Think about him and get him something you know he would really know that you put some deep thought into. Give the fathers a, a round of applause. Happy Father's Day. Me and you didn't have to say it, the chairman said it on your behalf. Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. And for the little bitty kids, just go ahead and get them the handwrite daddy, a, a nice little, because he's going to treasure that. Dads keep them a little card too. We got, I got cards from all four of them when they were really little. And I got the, the one with the hand design and all that, I still have that. So we, that is Father's Day this Sunday. Make sure you celebrate your fathers. Uh, that's, no other announcements for me, uh, um, except for Director Rulich, other than the fact that this is early voting week and that Election Day is on next Tuesday, the 18th. Are there any other announcements between you and Chief Sanders?
So I just have one. So next Wednesday, the 19th is a holiday, it's Juneteenth.
Yes.
So we will be closed and I know there's a few celebrations going on. Um, that is the only announcement that I had.
And I just, I think Commissioner Washington has one more piece of good news to share this week.
I don't know how I forgot this. So I, we, we are the proud recipients of a $145,000 grant from the USDA and the University of Georgia to do my community garden slash meditation garden. Um, we worked very, very hard on soliciting, getting those funds. We're in the planning stages. We will be coming to the communities for input on elements of the garden, but I am very, very excited about it. Um, you'll all be hearing more about it soon.
All right, well, congratulations on that, Commissioner. Absolutely. Don't forget the school is out, the summer is already in full effect. Watch your speed as you go through the neighborhoods. Happy Tuesday, happy Father's Day. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
No, Mr. Chairman.